The clerk, please call the roll.
Robert Inserpi.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Here.
Wes Wynn.
Preston.
Chairman Kurlender.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
James Corstier.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 16th?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Hold on a minute.
Okay. There is discussion.
Yeah, I have a question on on the minutes. This is where we noted that the zoning board will be presenting both sides to vote on the vote on the city council to the project last month that we had a close vote on. I'd like to add comments by comments by members for their vote on their request be inserted in there that we went through and everybody commented on their vote because it was so contentious.
That's what we meant, Jim, when we said that both sides will be presented, so that everyone's views will be known. Let me just say that that meeting at city council was adjourned. I'm not certain that they're going to go forward. Do you know anything about that, councillor?
They have deferred it until further notice.
I would like to, it doesn't say anything in the minutes here that our comments were presented.
They weren't presented.
Well, we went around and everybody asked why we
Right.
why we made our vote.
And then we were going to go to the city council. Right? Is that what you're
You feel it's not necessary?
No, no, if you want it in there, please.
I would like to have that note noted that we went through the procedure of making comments about our vote.
So everyone's individual comments on why they voted yes or why they voted no was solicited and duly noted and will be presented should it become necessary at the city council.
Thank you.
All right with that?
Sure.
Everybody okay with that amendment? Okay, so moving on, public hearings. Let's talk about that a little bit. It's customary that at this point in the meeting, we hear from the public. And that's fine, should anybody wish to do so. I would suggest that if you're here to speak for or against any particular matter on the calendar, that you wait until you hear all the evidence. And then we have another public comment, period. And we will take the time to allow everybody to speak. We think that public interest is a terrific thing. The more the public gets interested in what we're doing, the better we will be. So we look forward to that. Councillor?
Chairman, I just want to point out that there may be some people here in the audience for a project which was the Benita Lakes Plan Development Amendment. It's not on the agenda, but originally had been scheduled. That item is not coming up today, so if there's anyone here who's waiting for that item, there's no need to wait, it's not going to be heard.
So that's the two cases for the cell tower?
No.
That's an additional
That's an additional one that was never even made it onto the agenda.
Okay. But the two cases, one for asking for a special exception and the other asking for a variance, that too
Those two have been continued as of right.
So if anybody is here with regard to those, the matter's been adjourned at the request of the applicant. I want to explain that. I think there's some people here for the towers.
So the applicant for the Vision Baptist Church, which required both a special exception and a variance for the height, they are entitled to a continuance if they are not prepared to move forward. As it is an as-of-right continuance the first time around, and so they have submitted a request that will, if they continue to move forward, that will come at another duly noticed meeting, but it will not be heard today. So you only have three items on your public hearing agenda, just for the public who is here. It's the Bay Water Boat Club Consumption on Premises, the Coastal Cottage's Residential Plan Development, and a special exception signage request for Naples Community Hospital.
Does anyone choose to speak at this time in the public comment period? Or you're deferring to speak later? Hearing that no one wants to speak, we'll call oh, someone, please.
If you would like your comments to be on the record,
Yes.
then I would recommend that you wait till the Coastal Cottage's item comes up. It'll be a public hearing.
I think you're better off that way, but if you want to speak now, that's fine. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
You can do it now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Donna Schwinghammer. My husband Terry and I live at 26429 Bay Road in a newly constructed home on a 50-foot wide lot in a VE-15 zone located on Hoag Channel. There are many 50-foot lots on Little Hickory Island, Hoag Channel, Estero Bay, and the Imperial River. My husband and I recently purchased a 26-foot boat. We installed a new dock and lift for our boat. We spoke with the DEP representative who said we could definitely have a 50-foot square foot canopy over our dock, so we filed the permit application to DEP and received permission. We also filed the permit application with the city and were quite surprised to hear that our permit was denied, especially when there are many docks with canopies and boathouses throughout the Benita Springs waterways. After further research of the city's ordinances for boathouses and making some inquiries with officials at community development, we were advised that we should attend a zoning meeting today since the zoning board is in the process of considering changes to the current ordinances for boathouses over docks. One of the sections of the ordinances that we found most disturbing is the unreasonable restrictions for boathouse setbacks. Section 2 states, "The minimum setbacks for boathouses measured from side lot lines and riparian lines to the nearest point of the structural beam of the boathouse roof are as followed: natural water bodies 25 feet and artificial water bodies 10 feet." This ordinance is completely unrealistic and discriminating for those residents who own 50-foot lots and want to protect their investments. It was suggested to us that we file a variance with the city. The variance process currently in place is completely unrealistic for residents of Benita. It is terribly expensive, difficult, and overwhelming for residents. The current variance process is definitely more geared for developers and corporations who have access to money, attorneys, and professionals familiar with the process, not for residents. It would be much more user-friendly for the citizens of Benita to have a hearing process where we could meet with the zoning board maybe one day a month to make these more simple requests or simply filling out a form for the request of the resident for the board to consider in a timely manner. Every case is different, and residential cases are usually more simple, like ours, that shouldn't have to go through the current intimidating variance procedure. We understand also that one of the ideas the board is considering with smaller lots is the property owner seeking to install the boathouse or canopy get written permission from the neighbors on either side of the property. Please do not consider this. This is an easy fix. Not all neighbors are friends. To make a new ordinance contingent on the say-so of neighbors is not the way to address the issue and would be completely unfair. We also understand that the board is considering its options based on scenic views of the neighbors. Although we understand that premise, the board will also need to take into consideration the velocity zones of the areas before making one sweeping ordinance. Just having a boat on a lift impedes vision at the ground level. All of us are in velocity zones here on Little Hickory Island. Our area of Bay Road are in zones 14, 15, and 16.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
I just have, yeah, one paragraph.
Please.
Having a canopy over a dock on Hoag Channel's side would not impede vision of the neighbors since our living areas are already well above the dock and canopy heights. We hope that the zoning board will take these suggestions into thoughtful consideration in its effort to update these restrictive ordinances and variance procedures in a timely manner. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Hearing none. We'll call the case of the Bay Water Boat Club. Before we get to that, there's one other item of business. Beginning Friday after 5:00 and going through yesterday, I have received 17 emails for the Coastal Cottage's case. By law, I am obligated to file those with the clerk of the court. I want my colleagues here to be aware that when I started receiving them, I immediately communicated with our counsel and was instructed what to do. These are ex parte communications which by law are permitted, but which by practice, this board doesn't do. We don't take ex parte meetings for proponents or opponents of projects. That's just the way we do business. We think it's a fairer way, but we receive those and they are now filed as part of the record. With regard to today's procedure, for people who want to speak, there's a three-minute limitation. There is one person who has requested extra time, Kathleen. We will grant that time to five minutes, if that's all right. And I would urge you, when you speak, not to repeat what's already been said. We're paying attention. With that, let's proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Brian Farrar with BCF Management Group. I represent the Botana family business called Bay Water Boat Club.
Mr. Farrar, if you could hold on just one second. All of today's items are quasi judicial, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask to swear in anyone who's testifying, and I'll, we'll do it one time right now, swear in anyone who even if you don't plan on speaking, but you have a possibility, an inkling somewhere down the line, you might want to stand up and speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Good reminder. I'm here today to represent the Botana family on a special exception request. The Botana family, they own the Bay Water Boat Club here on Bean Beach Road. If you may have your exhibits, I know I did resend those, so if you have any questions or comments, I am going to go through some of the PowerPoint presentations for that, but Mary's going to give those back out. Thank you. The special exception request today is for to go through and have a limited use beer and wine service or consumption use permit at the Bay Water Boat Club. In order to further fulfill the needs of the Bay Water Boat Club membership, the Bay Water Boat Club hereby requests a special exception be granted for the sale and service of on-premises consumption of alcohol pursuant to the Benita Springs Section 4. The Bay Water Boat Club believes that the additional use after our normal business hours will enhance the club's experience for its members. It would not cause adverse impacts to the surrounding properties or community, as will only serve the club membership. To further demonstrate that, they will continue to minimize impacts to the surrounding area, the club will not provide food service or live music during those limited hours of operation of 5 till 9. Just to give you a better idea, location here, on your exhibits, I have also provided on the PowerPoint presentation. This is west of US 41 as you're traveling west on Bean Beach Road. On the north side of Bean Beach Road, it's annotated in the aerial exhibit. There's actually two separate tracks, and staff was kind enough to go through, and I was going to mention as well. There's, I call it Bay Water West and Bay Water East. Bay Water West is the existing marina and boat club facility area. And to the east, Bay Water East, is the, you'll notice a larger rectangular area. We recently constructed the next facility in the last couple of years. There's three locations for the beverage consumptive use areas. This is the location of the easterly Bay Water Track. It's an existing tiki hut facility. We have all the rest area facilities that are there. We're having just limited chairs. We have four with the service area. Bay Water West, there are two tiki huts. There is one adjacent to the dock facility, you'll notice here on the northeast side. I'll see if I can just, right there. And over here, there's a smaller one. Sorry about that. Not sure what happened there, but the other one's right there. As you can see, we have a limited number of seating, a limited number of activities planned for this. Like I said, this is just an enhancement to the existing club membership only. And that's, I won't go much more into it for now. I know staff has a full report. We're in agreement with all the staff's recommendations and conclusions. The only thing I want to add to the record, one of their comments was to provide a letter from Benita Springs Utilities regarding the grease trap interceptor, and I had that letter for the record.
Before you sit down.
I'm open to questions.
While I understand you're in agreement on most things with the staff, there is an issue that I don't think has been adequately addressed here that bothered me, and that's the issue of music. While you did say you would not use live music, you didn't say anything about other music. And to me, that's, you're in a very, very, a lot of, there's a lot of residences there. And before we get into a fight about, you know, with the neighbors and everything, are you willing to amend it so that you will use no music?
No, actually, we're quite happy with working with the noise ordinance. I think that's what staff has recommended. We live well within the noise ordinance. I think it's an extreme request to have no music at all. I mean, we have existing music there right now.
The noise ordinance has two provisions. One is 75 decibels at the or this point and so on. The second part of it is the issue here. And the second part of it relates to any repetitive noise that is not usual for the area. It's precisely what this is. And I would suggest that you're walking into a, to an issue there. I'd like to hear from the staff on it as well, as well as my colleagues who may not, may disagree with me.
As I mentioned, we're more than happy to live within the noise ordinance and whatever the city staff has recommended.
May I? Is this the time you want us to respond?
Well, we could talk about
Do you want to what? Have the staff go first?
Let the staff go first, and then we'll come back. I just, okay. You want to go? Please.
Good morning, Mary Zizo, for the record. Today we have a request, as mentioned, for a special exception for consumption on premises for an existing boat club facility to provide seating outdoors for outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages. So as Mr. Farrar mentioned, this would be heading towards the water off of Hickory on the north side. This facility has been issued a commercial use permit since 2003, but has been occupied for over 20 years. As Mr. Farrar mentioned, we did separate the facility for this request into two sections, Bay Water West and Bay Water East, as Freedom Boat Club resides in the middle of those properties. So in an effort to not have patrons traversing over the middle property, they have three tiki huts, two on Bay Water West and one on Bay Water East. And they're proposing to serve beer and wine at both of these locations. So Bay Water West is a total of 280 square feet, and then Bay Water East is a total of 540 square feet. It's a much larger tiki hut, while Bay Water West has two. And they're requesting this for 5 to 9 p.m. Monday through, I'm sorry, seven days a week. They do have adequate restroom facilities, according to our code, which are both ADA accessible and provide for men's and women's facilities. This request requires a special exception because of the surrounding zoning. Because there is a, FGCU has a marine research lab within 500 feet with apartments on premises, the special exception is required. So the surrounding zoning would be agricultural to the north, to the east is a real estate office, to the south is Benita Beach Road, and then Collier County. And then to the west is Florida Gulf Coast University's Marine Research Lab. As I mentioned, FGCU does have a marine research lab and that is roughly 75 feet in width of a separation by a water channel. Bay Water East is located more than 500 feet from any facility that would require a special exception. And these are the site plans that the applicant provided to you as well today, showing that each tiki hut will have four chairs, it does have four chairs, as well as a desk area within for all three locations. Staff did find this compatible with the Benita plan as it is for general commercial. And for neighborhood compatibility, we did find this to be appropriate as it's not the only location within the 500 feet is a 75-foot channel between them and then FGCU, as this is a college apartment facility. And then we did put on there that we recommend that the noise control ordinance does stay in effect to ensure that it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. And so staff does recommend approval that the service of alcoholic beverages does stay entirely within those tiki huts. Any additional seats will require additional infrastructure, including bathrooms and parking. The sale is for boat club members only and will not be available to the general public. This is for beverages only. Food service would require additional restrooms, parking facilities, and permissions from Benita Springs Utilities. The operational hours, we limited from 5 to 9 p.m., seven days a week. At the close of, I'm sorry, at the close of business, all coolers, beverages, and any items showing that there has been consumption on premises are to be completely and entirely put away. One can be closed as a tiki hut, the other needs to be stored within the main rental facility that they have. And then, of course, they'll have to file their state forms if approved, and that, like I said, the noise control ordinance will remain in full effect. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I'm interested to know whether currently boat club owners who come back from a day on the water can stay on their boats and drink and have music, or whether you insist that they leave the premises at some specific time.
Good morning, and thank you for the question. Right now, the normal business hour is from 8 to 5. What we're trying to do is enhance the membership experience, and where normally they would leave after 5:00, we're trying to allow them to have some collegial opportunities with each other and opportunities to have a good social time. So we would go from 5 until 9.
And what are the tiki huts used for now?
Tiki huts right now are used for the point of service for the rentals, or the membership, rather. And so they have the ability to go through, and there's chairs that are existing that are already there. There's also soda and water in coolers and things that are there right now.
So I guess what I'm hearing from you is that people don't come back from a day on the water, sit on their boats, enjoy a drink, and collegiality. I mean, since I've been a boater most of my life, that would describe most marinas I've ever been.
Yeah, we don't have any particular boats sitting on the boats, and that doesn't, we haven't seen that before.
All right, that's it. So I guess I was looking at how big a change this was actually going to be from what was the norm at the moment. My understanding of marinas, it wouldn't have been that big a change. But I think you are saying that now you would have people around from 5 to 9 that under current conditions are not around from 5 to 9. Is that right?
That is correct.
That was what I was looking for.
That's correct.
Has there been any complaints with noise in the past in over the years, activities?
No.
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the board?
Yeah, reading some of the background information that was given to us, there was a comment that in your business plan, the plan was to expand from 33 boats to 60 boats in the future. And obviously, along with that goes an increase in membership. And of course, with an increase in membership, we get into the issue of parking and the other things that you mentioned, additional permitting would be required. Where do you reach that point, and what do you do about it?
Well, that's a very good question. Actually, the parking facilities, especially in Bay Water East, that did take all those additional dock permits into account. So that LDO was actually approved, the phase one portion of it was constructed. We're in the process right now of amending the LDO to actually construct those docks. But the parking, the facilities, all the bathrooms, handicap spaces was all taken care of in phase one.
Is there going to be a, what happens when there's a phase two?
Phase two is just the construction of the docks. It's been a long process, working with the Corps of Engineers and with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. We've received all those permits now, and it's just a matter of moving forward to build those docks.
Okay, I guess that really didn't answer the question, but maybe you can answer the question from a staff point of view of how do you deal with an increase in use and membership that you don't even know is going on?
They do have to satisfy parking when they increase their docks. Now, I believe
Well, the existing docks, the proposed docks, the parking calculations have been addressed in that. So whether it's parking facilities and/or handicap accessibility and/or bathrooms, all that, that's all been addressed during the phase one construction. So now it's an administrative thing relative to getting the docks constructed itself, so. Capacity's been already designed into it.
So what you're saying, really, if you get more boats, you need more docks. If you need more docks, you need more parking, you need more parking.
Those are all addressed when they go through the permitting process.
The other question I had was somewhere in the documentation here, there was a comment about neighborhood meeting.
Yep.
Did that happen?
Yes, it did.
Can you tell us the results of that, or?
We provided the minutes from the meeting. We had two people show up for the public meeting. The gentleman who owns the Freedom Boat Club wanted to see what we were doing. And then there was another couple that lived farther down towards Backwater Jacks. And they were all very happy to see what was going on. There was no negative comments.
Thank you.
Yep. Coconut Jacks. My apologies, Roger.
Any further questions from the board? Public comment. Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the the special exception as presented with the deviations of any outline in the presentation.
I will move to amend, adding that their application is for 5 to 9. That seems fine. No music after 9:00. Is there a second to that? Second. The amendment will be called first. Roll call. Roll call on the amendment. The amendment is to approve the application as presented and approved by the city staff, subject to there being no music after 9:00 o'clock. Is there any further comments? Call the roll.
Russ Nguyen?
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander?
Yes.
Richard Donley?
Yes.
Roger Brenswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
Yes.
Robert Insirpi?
Yes.
Robert Craig?
Yes.
The amendment having passed, there is no need to consider the original motion. Is that correct? Am I correct on Robert's rules on that?
No, actually, you would vote on the original motion now. This just came up with the city council, but very well done.
This is a, this was a friendly amendment under Robert's rules, but, but call the roll on the original.
James Worster?
Yes.
Robert Insirpi?
Yes.
Robert Craig?
Yes.
Robert Nguyen?
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander?
Yes.
Richard Donley?
Yes.
Roger Brenswick?
Yes.
The motion is approved, subject to the conditions added by the board.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. The next case is the, on the agenda is the Vision Baptist Church Cellular Tower Special Exception Case. Is there anyone here from the applicant? I wish they would be here. I have a, I have a question.
That item is, or?
It's put over, but I have a question that I want to raise, a legal question. My legal question is, given the ordinance on variances, the meaning of the ordinance, the definition of what a variance is, how in the world can we grant a variance to a special exception? Are we not amending the law? We sit as a judicial body, not as a legislative body, and therefore, I don't understand how it's possible. So, no discussion now, just, I'm raising the question. I ask you to raise that with the applicant and counselor, if you, and also your counsel, just different from our counsel, be prepared to discuss that when that case returns to the, I'd appreciate that.
I want, just to clarify, the request for Vision Wireless Church, unlike the issue we dealt with previously in the Popeyes, it's not a variance from the special exception criteria. The special exception is dealing with the use, the variance is dealing with, well, in this case, height. So, both seem, do not, although the two are interrelated in their request, the variance is not from the, any of the special exception criteria. It's not addressing the use, it's only addressing the height setbacks, et cetera.
So, let's, let's talk about it when they're here in fairness.
I just want to make sure that we understand.
Yeah, we're on same. So, that, that case, as a matter of right, has been put over. So, I don't think we have to vote on that, do we, or do we?
No.
No, it's, it's a matter of right. The next case is Naples Community Hospital Special Exception Signage Case. The applicant.
Next case is the Coastal Cottage. No, Coastal Cottage is next.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Coastal Cottage?
My bad, my bad. My bad, it's the Coastal Cottage case. We'll call, we'll call the Coastal Cottage case. We, it's, I should have mentioned this at the outset, but it's been our practice to, to take a 15-minute break after every hour and a half, just to give you a heads up on that.
Larry, before we start, I have a, I just want to make a, mention that I have an affiliation with the realtors representing this project, the property, and I want to go on record.
Is it, is there, is there a-
I have-
Financial benefit?
No, no, none, and it hasn't been discussed, but I do want to just go on record.
What's the nature of the affiliation?
A team, real estate team affiliation with, with the, with Garen Grup, who's representing the property.
But it's not, not a nature-
Representing the sellers.
Okay, not a nation ship of a partnership or anything like that?
No, it's not a partnership, no financial benefit, but needed to be mentioned.
And Chairman Kurlander already indicated that he received ex parte communications from the emails. If anyone else, please acknowledge that you received those emails, and make sure we get copies to the clerk's office before we get started.
Yeah, and while we're going to talk about ex parte, let me, for the record, I did want to note that the applicant has a concern about those because they are not subject to cross-examination, and therefore, in my opinion, should not be considered as competence of financial evidence.
Neil Montgomery, attorney for the applicant.
You got to swear to the witnesses, please.
I swore everyone in.
Oh, you did, okay.
Good morning, for the record, Neil Montgomery, attorney for the applicant, and with me today, we have Wayne Arnold, who has been qualified and accepted here previously as an expert in planning, and we're going to ask that he be still accepted today. Also, we have with us Mike Delitt, who's been previously testified and qualified as an expert in civil engineering, and we ask that he be so qualified today. And also, Mr. Banks, who is being qualified as an expert in transportation, and we ask that he be still accepted here today. And representing the, from a real estate standpoint, an expert in that regard, we have with us Mike Mauer. The property, if you travel west from where we are, down Benita Beach Road, and go left on Vanderbilt, you will find the parcel of property. You will notice that it's surrounded by existing development. That's important because your comprehensive plan indicates that we are supposed to focus highly on urban infill, so this is clearly an infill parcel. If you look at it a little more closely, you'll realize that it's surrounded by a variety of different uses. To the north is a church, and north of that is an office park. Across Vanderbilt, which is the Collier lead line, you'll find that there is a comparable facility in terms of an ALF use and a restaurant on the other side of the street, and you have multifamily in what I would call an older-style development to the south. If you look at your regulations in regards to AG2, which is what the property is known now, you'll see that the purpose of the agricultural district is to provide areas for the establishment or continuation of agricultural operations. Obviously, I don't think anybody wants this to be an agricultural operation presently, that's one of the permitted uses, and residential under AG2 is supposed to be accessory to agricultural operations. I would note that a bed and breakfast, and there are other uses that are allowed by right or administratively. So, I would submit that agriculture is not appropriate as an urban infill parcel in the middle of the city. It is appropriate and should be rezoned. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Arnold.
Mr. Arnold indicated to me he had not been sworn, so, Mr. Arnold, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Wayne Arnold, I'm a certified planner with Q. Grady Minor and Associates. I've appeared before you before and been accepted as an expert. Representing the property owner and the proposed developer today, we are asking for a residential plan development to allow an assisted living facility on the subject property. Your comprehensive plan category for this property is medium-density multifamily. It allows up to six units per acre, and through the density conversion opportunities for senior housing opportunities that don't have individual kitchens, there's a density factor of four per room or four per person, which gets us to the ability to ask for 96 units, we're seeking 92 units for the proposal. Neil mentioned to you that this is an infill parcel, and it's also agriculturally zoned. One of the things that I would say, in addition to what Neil mentioned about permitted uses, is the church that exists today, the New Life Church, formerly known as the Benita Baptist Church, operates a childcare facility, and also, obviously, is a church. Those are permitted uses under agricultural zoning as permitted by right uses. So, for some of the discussion, you may hear from neighbors about potential incompatibility of what we're choosing to do through the rezoning process, you could have another church locate on part of this property without any say-so from the neighbors, it's all an administrative process. So, there would be no say as to hours of operation, location of parking, location of playgrounds, et cetera. So, I think that's important to note for the record. This is our proposed conceptual master plan, and we've placed all of our parking to the north of the subject property adjacent to the church parking. We have a series of what we're calling our cottages, because each of those cottages will house the individuals in a bedroom scenario, whereby they'll also have a common living area, as well as a common kitchen to dine at, and hopefully to have a more home environment than some of the institutional facilities that you've seen come before you. This is a little nicer photo to look at, and it actually shows the interior footprint of each of the buildings, but one of the things that I think is important to note here, and see if I can get my highlighter to, but the central area for the project is going to be the administration facility, then you have four separate cottages that would house the residents. Our access point is proposed, a new access point on Vanderbilt Drive aligning with 7th Street across the street, and I think important to note, and Mr. Banks will, will talk to you about that, Vanderbilt Drive is operated by Collier County, and that is the one deviation we've asked for, to have separation from the existing Via Del Rey access that the church and our offices happen to share, so that we could align at 7th. There could have been mid-block opportunities, but Collier County, in our several meetings with them, wanted us to have an access point directly across from 7th. You'll note, water management areas are going to be a continuation of what the church currently has on site along Vanderbilt Drive, a dried detention system. And I think one of the biggest and nicest features of the proposed project happens to be the central courtyard with walkways and shade structures, and I've got some images of that to show you. Again, I mentioned the one deviation, it's really one of dealing with your minimum separation criteria of 330 feet to allow us to be at 275 feet, which is, happens to be the measurement of the separation between 7th and Via Del Rey. Compatibility, several of the emails you said, you saw, said that this was somehow incompatible, and I think, keep in mind that this is a permitted use under your comprehensive plan. The residential plan development option, whether we were seeking senior housing in this case, or we were seeking standard multifamily dwellings like we have next door, keep in mind, these are one-story structures, we've met all of your setback requirements per the code, we've met all of your criteria according to the code for finding for rezoning, and to me, one, it's an infill project, but two, it's a very good transitional use. I think that it's a great transition between the church and the existing multifamily dwellings to the south of us. I think there's a great opportunity and a relationship between the elderly folks that will live here, and the church that has a preschool program. I think there's a lot of potential interaction for the older adults to have interaction with the children, and, and I think that'll be a good relationship. Obviously, they can walk to church, and I think that's also advantageous, there's shopping opportunities nearby if they chose to walk or drive. Most of these residents probably aren't going to be drivers, because there's also a memory care component here, but nonetheless, they'll have nearby opportunities to walk and to shop and to have religious services. So, in my opinion, we have met your definition of compatibility. Somebody had also mentioned that we were subject to coastal flooding. I just put this slide in here, this is from your Future Land Use Map series, and everything shaded in dark gray is in your coastal high-hazard area, everything south of Benita Beach Road is not, and we are not within your coastal high-hazard area. This is a buffer exhibit that had been prepared, that shows you sort of our relationship with the two-story multifamily buildings to the south. So, south is to the right of the screen, there's an existing mature buffer that exists, it's a 30-foot natural vegetation buffer. There was some discussion in your emails that we were asking for a deviation from that, and we previously were, we withdrew that deviation and shifted the building to meet the 30-foot setback, so there's no deviation on the table related to a setback.
Yeah, in the, excuse me for interrupting you here, but that was confusing to me. In the staff's presentation, they said that there was one deviation that's being requested, and, or I may have it backwards, where you originally said that there were three, three deviations.
There were three, we had a sign, we had a sign deviation, the access deviation, and then one from your wildfire buffer setback.
Right, that wildfire buffer.
Yes, so we withdrew the signage and the wildfire buffer, that leaves us with the road separation only.
So, what's under consideration is that single question?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, again, showing the relationship of our proposed one-story building with our landscape buffer, the existing natural landscape buffer that's mature, that's part of the Bermuda Isles project, and then their additional setback to this two-story buildings, we think that's a very compatible relationship, and we've met all of your PD-required setbacks for the type of use. These are some color renderings that we had prepared, or I should say, the prospective purchasers of the land have prepared. This is a view of the administration building and the courtyard arrival for the property. So, this was on the north side of the proposed project. This, again, is another image, just pulls back a little farther, you get to see the relationship between the administration drop-off area and the northernmost cottage to the east. Again, another view of the porticoche, and numerous sidewalks and opportunities for the residents to walk around the gardens and the campus. This is an interior view of the proposed courtyard, you can see it's going to have fountains, walkways, landscaping, yard space for the residents. Another view with seating area shown for shade. Just another view of the interior courtyard, and I think this goes to some of the questions that people had about this somehow being a very dense project that doesn't fit, but in fact, bringing the residents into the courtyard and having all of it internal to the site makes a lot of sense, and I think furthers the compatibility relationship with the neighbors by not putting any active part of the facility on the south side of our property. This is an aerial view looking down into the courtyard, so you get a sense that there are various seating areas, various sidewalks, lots of landscaping proposed. Another view, another view of the interior courtyard, an outdoor seating area, and some active outside areas. Here's a conceptual floor plan, as I pointed out, in this particular location, it's hard to read, but each of these would be bedrooms, and this is set up so that some of those can have one bed, some could have two, that's how you get to the 92. There's probably, I think, 72 rooms shown here, but it can accommodate up to 92 beds. But we have a centralized dining area and social area for the project, some outdoor lanai space as well for the residents to enjoy the courtyard. And then again, each of those outlined areas are bedrooms. One of the discussion points had also been, in our community, the need for senior housing such as this. This is based on ACA, which is the Agency for Healthcare Administration, they post information regarding facilities, so we sampled some of those that are nearby, and you can see the first one's licensed for 78 beds at the Renaissance at the terraces, but it's 100% occupied. American House, also here in Benita, it's 100% occupied. Brookdale at Benita, 92.5% occupancy. Kiva across the street from this facility, only 38 beds, but 100% occupancy rate. And then Inspired Living at Benita, that's a memory care-only facility, and it's 100% occupied. So, clearly, there seems to be a- So clearly, there seems to be an extreme need in our community for more of the senior housing. This is a photograph, just so we have it on record, of the nearest Bermuda Isle residents. This was taken from a Google Earth shot from Vanderbilt Drive. You can see that they have some walls landscaping. They also are two-story buildings. Across the street is the Canterbury-Kiva assisted living facility. It's been there for a number of years. It's a quiet, certainly a good neighbor to the community to date. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Dellett, who's going to touch on the drainage and surface water management aspects of this.
Before you get there?
Yes, sir.
When you went to the community meeting, to the neighborhood meeting, is it fair to say you told the people that this would be, that the height of the structures would be 25 feet?
I think I did misspeak in that meeting, sir, but the...
You misspoke.
I think so, yes.
You misspoke big time.
Well, the 30-foot request has been in there since day one of our application. The current ag zoning allows 35-feet height.
And the people here are supposed to know about that it's in your application. When you say it's 25 feet, and it's really not 25 feet, you misled them.
I proceeded to mislead them.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was intentional.
I object to the attack on the witness. It's appropriate to ask questions, but it's not appropriate to attack witnesses.
Your objection is duly noted.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Mike Dellett from Grady Minor Engineers, professionally an engineer in this area for about 30 years now, and worked with Grady Minor for the last 21 years, and our office is located immediately north of the church site, so I'm very familiar with the site. I haven't worked in the vicinity for quite a few years. Just to give a kind of a general overall perspective of the drainage in this area, Vanderbilt Drive has a swell that runs along the east side of the road maintained by Collier County Road Maintenance, and that drains all the way to the north Benita Beach Road into a collection system there, which discharges into the Imperial River. Farther south, Vanderbilt Drive also has a swell of both sides of the road, east and west sides. They convey to the south through the Audubon Country Club and then out back through the Wiggins Bay system. Right along the south side of the church property is the basin divide line between the two drainage basins. The church site has a permit that dates back to the early 1990s. When the site was originally permitted, the entire project area of the property was incorporated into the permit and given a permit to proceed. The church and the parking lot, the open park and the grass parking was including that permit, and then later on modified to add the gymnasium use. So the permit's been modified through the years a few times. The existing water management system is a large linear dry detention system that is located on the west side of the property. And again, our offices are right over here. My office is right there. I've seen that thing function for 20 years, and it works as designed. The system collects all the water from the site. There's a berm along, an effective berm along all sides, and the water drains across overland in the open area right now where this is proposed to the water management area. And then the church has a few conveyance swales and pipes that convey it to the dry detention area. There's a control structure along the north side of the property round right here. That has a discharge pipe into the Vanderbilt Drive swell, and has a controlled discharge. The discharge then goes to the north into the Imperial system. Switching now to the project to the south, which is Bermuda Isles. Their system was designed, a permit, around the same time, maybe a little bit later. The project's design relies a lot on overland conveyance. You can see I kind of, underneath these arrows that were added in the PDF, their original plan showed some squiggly lines, but essentially the water's conveyed to the north side of the project and then flows to the west. The original design has that water heading south then into the master stormwater system for Vanderbilt Lakes. And again, Vanderbilt Lakes then discharges out underneath Vanderbilt Drive into Vanderbilt Drive system and then eventually through the Audubon Country Club.
Mike, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I noticed in your presentation, as you've just said, that you're utilizing the previously authorized construction of the church drainage plan that they submitted. That was done in 1986, and it was done with a 25-year, three-day storm event.
Yes.
I noticed in the staff's comments that they are requiring a 100-year, 24-hour storm event, which would deliver a lot more water in a shorter period of time and therefore require much more detention. Now, I appreciate that you've made some changes to your, the existing debts to accommodate for the filling of the debts for your new entrance. You're increasing the slopes inside, which I understand, but you're still, in my opinion, woefully short of the current design standard, which was what condition or deviation that was listed with what the package we got on page four. Can you explain how you're addressing the additional current requirement for stormwater storage versus the 1986 version that was presented?
Sure. So I was going to elaborate on that, but glad you brought it up. So the water management district rules have not changed in terms of what is the required storm event for having the site bermed. That's a 25-year, three-day storm event. The requirement by the water management districts throughout the state of Florida is established by the Florida Administrative Code, and that cannot be superseded by any agency, is to have a 25-year storm event, three-day event, to determine the peak stage, and that berm then has to be placed around the entire site to that stage. The church did model it back with its original permit for that and incorporated impervious area, a proposed impervious area for the southern part of the project, which now is being proposed to be developed. So that project, when it was originally permitted, they had a vision for building the entire site. It wasn't going to be just fields, and over time, they've added a gymnasium and other facilities. Water management district permit was master designed at the time, which was a requirement then and is a requirement now to anticipate future development. I'm not quite sure what the 100-year, one-day event is supposed to represent. Frankly, I know that was going to be a discussion later on, but we did agree that we would use an ICPR model to remodel the system with fairly confidence nothing's going to change because the old system was designed per the requirements of today. Nothing's changed in that regard. So as we go farther into the land, excuse me, the development order process, we'll work with staff as to the modeling efforts, but this time, we do not foresee any need for additional water management area because it meets all the requirements under the statutes and under your comp plan and your land development code.
Okay. Could we then address why this 100-year, 24-hour storm was put in as a deviation request?
I'm going to object at this point in time and ask for Mr. Dellett to clarify. Mike, have we asked for any deviations from any of the land development code requirements relative to...
Excuse me, please, counselor. You have any, would you state your objection first? What's your objection?
Yes, sir. The objection is, is that he's misstated the situation that we're asking for a deviation from the land development code drainage requirements. I don't believe that's correct, and I would like Mr. Dellett to clarify that for the record so that we all have a clear understanding.
Fair enough.
Ms. Mike Grumery is correct. We have not requested any deviation from the land development code in that regard.
All right. Well, just discuss then what's presented on page four of our package that we got, that provide interconnected pond and channel routing to evaluate the 100-year, 24-hour storm event. Will you address how you're going to do that, or is that coming in your presentation?
Staff will elaborate on that, but...
Okay.
Interconnected pond routing, that's ICPR. It's actually a proprietary software that's utilized to analyze stormwater systems. There's various methods that the water management districts and your own community development accept. So they're requesting that this specific software be utilized for 100-year, 24-hour event, which we agreed will utilize that and prepare an analysis. I think what they want to see is, and I'll let staff elaborate on that, is that we're not going to impact the surrounding properties by having discharge go into the other basins. And we're glad to cooperate with staff in that regard. There's no intent to send water outside of the basin area.
Okay. I'll wait for staff's comments.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
Continue.
Actually, I have one before we move on, just for the sake of clarity. When you do your engineering, you look at the basin in which your project is located. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you can be right next to somebody else's property that could be in a different basin because it drains in a different direction.
Correct.
And the district and the city don't generally allow the water from those basins to cross over. Is that true?
That's true.
So I know that there's people here from our neighbors to the south that are concerned about their existing water management issues. Are they in the same basin or a different basin?
They're in a separate basin.
And so their water and the church's water don't interrelate. They're separate.
That is correct, under the design events.
And so whatever problems they have are problems in their basin, not as a result of what's happening in the church's basin.
Yes, and I'll just speak anecdotally to that. Obviously, I'm not their engineer of record, but I know that project through the years has experienced water, standing water issues, particularly the swell to the north. I've seen it after major rain events where the water just backs up there because it's unable, excuse me, to turn to the south and go into the master stormwater system. So I know they have their own standing washer issues there, but it has nothing to do with the church property, and I attest that only because I've been there 21 years next to this property as an engineer. So I'll continue on. Couple of comparison pictures here. I think they were submitted to the city's offices by property owners to the south. That is the dry detention system there to the left, typically dry. They have their sign in there. It's probably dry 90% of the year or so, and then after a rain event, sure, it fills up. The sign is located within the water management area. The control structure is down in the corner here, right about here, and it slowly bleeds that water down as it should. It treats it and attenuates the storm events. I wasn't here directly after Irma, but I've never seen that water management system breached in terms of water level. I believe that's it for me. Yes. If you have any questions?
What did you just say about Irma?
I wasn't there right the day, a few days after Irma, but I do not believe it even breached the banks then, but I've never seen it breach after even some of the biggest
Good morning. For the record, my name is Jim Banks. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Florida and president of J&amp;B Transportation Engineering. I have over 30 years of experience in the field of traffic and transportation engineering and have been accepted many times in the past as an expert in my field. My firm was responsible for preparing the traffic impact statement. The traffic impact statement was prepared pursuant to the criteria set forth by the city of Benita Springs. The report, the traffic report was then submitted for staff's review, which they did complete, and the city of Benita Springs staff agreed with the findings of the traffic study, which I will summarize very briefly. The traffic study determined that the 92-bed assisted living facility will generate 17 trips during the AM peak hour and 24 trips during the PM peak hour. So I just, to help you quantify that, I will simply say that if you were to, once this project is built and you were to set your chair up next to the driveway during the PM peak hour, which is the busiest time of day, you would sit there and you would clock one vehicle either entering or exiting the site every two minutes. So every two minutes, it would average out, I should say. I'm not saying that two people won't leave at the same time, but if you sit there for an hour during the PM peak hour and clock the number of vehicles coming in and out of our site, and also the number of trips that we would put on Vanderbilt, I'm sorry, Vanderbilt Road or Vanderbilt Drive, it would be one vehicle every two minutes. So we're not substantially or significantly or negatively impacting the surrounding road network. And this was the conclusion that was presented in the traffic report, and your staff agreed with that finding, that we did not significantly or negatively impact the adjacent road network. The report also acknowledges that Vanderbilt Drive is under the jurisdiction of Collier County. Now, that means that Collier County maintains the road. Collier County determines what the acceptable level of service is on that road. In this case, they've established that level of service D, as in David, is the maximum standard that they're going to hold on that road. Once it drops below level of service D, then Collier County would need to look at improving the road. As it turns out, it currently operates at level of service C. And this was also determined and presented in the traffic study, and I will repeat this because I think it's important because you might hear from others that may be contrary to what I'm saying, but I don't know. But based on that criteria that's set forth by Collier County for their road, the road currently operates at level of service C and will continue to operate at level of service C after this project is built out. And this is based on peak hour, peak season conditions. Now, this determination that I just presented to you has been validated by both the city of Benita Springs and Collier County Department of Transportation. So you have two governmental agencies that monitor the operating level of service on Vanderbilt Drive, and both of those agencies have concluded that the current operating level of service... Oh, I'm sorry. Was I supposed to change a slide here or something?
No, I tried to do it subtly, but it didn't work.
I apologize for that, yeah. Have a hard time walking and chewing gum. But both of those agencies that monitor the road have concluded that it operates currently at level of service C conditions during peak season. And that currently, the demand on the capacity is during peak season condition is 50% to 60% of the road's carrying capacity. So the road is, by the measure of most roads in Lee and Collier County, is underutilized during peak season conditions. In addition to the traffic study, the team, myself and members of the team, did coordinate with Collier County Department of Transportation regarding the proposed access. As Mr. Arnold mentioned earlier, we did meet with Collier County, and they wanted us to align our access with Seventh Street to avoid any offset condition, which we did. As it turns out, Seventh Street is at a distance of 275 feet south of the Sixth Street, which required that we request a deviation from 330 to 275 feet. So this was a geometric restriction that we had no control over and per Collier County DOT, and as a traffic engineer, I wholeheartedly agree with them that the best location for our access would be to align it with Seventh Street. This design was submitted to Collier County staff, their traffic operations department. Those are the folks that specialize in the traffic designs, and they found that this location was appropriate, and they provided a preliminary approval of this design. We have to go back, once the project is approved, we have to submit final plans, and then we'll get final approval. But they did approve this conceptual design.
Yeah. Mr. Banks, let me just ask you a question. That intersection spacing is an existing condition.
That's correct.
We're just acknowledging an existing condition, and we're locating our access in the safest location.
The best location and the safest location. That's correct.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes.
Over the last, I think, three years, Vanderbilt Road has been under heavy construction. So, and I mean, I know since I live here, I often use that as my way to get down to, say, Amokli or to Vanderbilt itself. I just wonder how you compensated for that in your analysis of the use of the road, because I don't think the last two or three years, measurement of traffic on that road reflects what hopefully it will. what hopefully it will, or what it's likely, I guess, to return to once the final piece of that is finished. I mean, you can now get to Amokli, but you can't get all the way to Vanderbilt.
Yeah, with the bridge construction.
How did you deal with that?
Well, we look back at the historical counts that were taken by both Collier County and the city of Bonita Springs prior to all that construction work, and that trend line was very consistent. There was a subtle drop in traffic, but not that much. And we, with the, the traffic study that's here before you today is based on more current counts since the southern access Vanderbilt over to US 41 is opened back up. I realize that the bridge was still closed at that time. But it's very consistent with the previous traffic counts prior to...
And so you compensated as...
Yes, that's correct.
Over time.
Yes.
I wondered how you did that thing.
I have a question that's... You mentioned that one vehicle every two minutes.
Average.
Average.
Yeah.
Maybe someone else can answer this question, but how does that translate into parking requirements on the site?
Well, parking, this is a big misunderstanding a lot of folks have. Parking doesn't correlate to traffic. What determines, it's a part of the equation. It's how many trips you generated and what's the turnover rate. Like a fast convenience store, the turnover rate's 15 minutes. An office park, the turnover's, you know, six or seven hours sometimes. So it's really a combination of those two. But the parking, the parking requirements are based on parking studies. So gone out and surveyed similar locations, similar to this, and they've determined what the typical parking demand is, and then they put a safety factor on top of that. And then the traffic is based on separate traffic studies. So the two never really go hand in hand, just because you do have that situation of turnover rate versus the number of trips generated.
Right. So your one per every two is more of a design criteria than a real-life situation?
One per two minutes? No, because some folks actually drive and drop somebody off and then leave, so that would be two trips right there. So if you have, and 24 trips is effectively, could be, is anywhere between 12 to 15 vehicles, because that's, you've got one leaving, you've got one coming in. So when you split it up that way, then all of a sudden, you're like, oh, 24 trips in an hour doesn't mean 24 parking spaces are occupied.
Right.
It's much less than that.
Okay. I guess we'll address the parking issue down the road.
Yeah, if I could follow up on your question, let me ask Mr. Banks a question. Mr. Banks, you're not saying that it's two, that's the number of trips all day long. When you talked about that, that's just the maximum peak hour?
That's our highest trip generating hour, is the PM peak hour. All other hours, other than that one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, we generate less trips.
And you look at peak hour because that's a requirement of doing a TIS?
Right. We look at the peak hour of when we generate our traffic versus what the peak demand is on the adjacent roads. So we don't determine what our trips are and then look at how that would affect, you know, 2 o'clock traffic. We take a look at our PM peak trips and see how that would affect the, between the 4:00 and 6:00 PM, peak hour trips, because that's when the higher demand is.
And one of the things I think that you use is the ITE manual, which is now like five volumes.
Yes.
And of the variety of uses that you have, is an ALF for a senior living one of the lowest trip generators that there is?
It is by far one of the lowest trip generators. And just for the record, my 32-plus years of doing this, this is actually one of my smallest projects I've ever worked on as it relates to the number of trips generated. It's not the smallest, but it is definitely in the, it's got to be in the top 10 smallest projects I've ever worked on, as far as traffic impacts and the amount of trips being generated.
And then let me ask you about parking. Parking is established by the land development code, is that correct?
Correct, which is based on parking studies, yes.
And ITE has a whole separate book on parking.
That's right. ITE, the parking demand studies, yes.
So, and we're not asking for a deviation from the parking requirements, so we will meet the city's parking requirements.
That's correct.
You've addressed the traffic on Vanderbilt. Was there any studies done on Mango Drive and the impact that'll have to the residents on Mango Drive?
No. I'm not sure we're even going to put trips on Mango Drive. But to answer your questions point-blank, no, we did not look at Mango Drive.
And the reason?
Because it's not one of the roads that is considered a priority road when the city and also Collier County, depending on which governmental agency takes control of that road, it's not a priority road that is looked at as far as maintaining current levels of service. It could be that the traffic volumes are so low, or it's not considered a major corridor.
Okay. I'm considering though.
Let me further address that. You have to have emergency access. The only access we have on Mango is emergency access, so that would, you wouldn't analyze that from a trip generation, because that would only be, if something happens and there's no other way to get there from off of Vanderbilt, then you might come in Mango, but on a regular basis, you would not use that access point.
That's an assumption, correct?
No, it's a requirement.
It is?
Yes.
Oh, it is gated?
It's restricted because it's emergency access.
Okay.
I would like to recall Wayne, he doesn't have to go back to the podium, but I just want to touch on the height issue. Wayne, can I ask you a question? I think you said it, but I want to be clear. What's the permitted height in AG2?
The permitted height is 35 feet.
And that's what is currently zoned and currently permitted?
That's correct.
And I noticed to our east, they're a single family. What's the current permitted height in the RS districts?
35 feet, I'm almost certain. And the RM2 district south of us also has 35 feet.
So when you look at compatibility, if you have the same permitted height as everybody else, in your expert opinion, is that compatible?
It is, but in this case, we're still five feet less in terms of height.
So that's still, are we still compatible even though we're less?
We are compatible.
Thank you. We don't have any other questions at this time. We would reserve the right for rebuttal after the public speaks so we can address their issues.
Well, based on your earlier pronouncement about taking a break at the hour and a half mark, you might want to take a break where it makes sense. I don't know if...
You want to do it now? Okay. So we will reconvene. It's now 10:17, 10:18. 20 of? Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll stand and reset.